Dear God, bless the work of our hands, the work of our minds, and the work of our hearts. May each day be an offering of worship to you. May your goodness flow through our every deed, and may you keep us, shelter us, protect us, and feed us, that we may be blessed with the finances we need and have the love and grace to give generously to all that are in need. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Cook and Mr. Andy Nakim. We welcome you to the City Council meeting. As Presiding Officer and Chair, I would like to announce the following. This is a public hearing, and any item on this agenda, please fill out the blue form or call into 337-291-8428. That's 291-8428, to submit your information to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistant is available if needed. Items for submission to the council should be handed to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left. When addressing the council, state your name and title for the official record. The five-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolutions and not by robed rules of order. All documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement in boards or commissions. If interested, call 337-291-8800. 337-291-8800. Chair announcement. I do not have any means, any announcement at this time, but if you call 337-291-8428 prior to reading of items, you will be contacted to speak during the public comment portion of this agenda item for which you signed up to speak. Any council members who would like to make any announcements? Okay, none, no one, okay. Executive Mayor, do you have any reports you would like to engage us with?
Comparison of major city funds Director Tubbs had submitted to the council for your review. If you have any question, we are both here to answer. And the only other announcement I have is that I'm very honored to be in attendance today to address item number five. We have our Deputy Chief that will be recognized for his dedicated service. I don't want to steal the thunder from Councilman Lewis, but I will tell you that I'm indebted to you, and I appreciate everything you've done for us.
Okay, item number five, which you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that's ceremony presentation. Please read, Ms., okay, yeah, read, Ms. Cindy.
Recognized Deputy Chief Reginald Thomas for his dedicated service to the Lafayette Police Department.
Mr. Lazar?
Yeah, it had to do, question I have for the Mayor President.
Okay, well, let's, you want to do the presentation first?
Yeah, let's do the presentation.
We already passed item four, too late.
Just give, still give next time.
Let's do the presentation.
Okay, we'd like to, you'd like to recognize, I have an award to give Mr. Reginald as he coming up. I'll say a few words, and I'm sure the mayor would like to say something as well. Before you speak, Mr. Reg, I'd like to say something. I'm sure you normally get a lot of standing ovation when you go out there and say something. I've been on the council for the last, I guess, four and a half years, and I met you when I first came on the council. And I'd like to commend all the hard work you have done prior to that time before I came. I know you have close to 30 years or so experience in Lafayette, and I do know you have some experience somewhere else. But I must admit, every time I call you or any council members I know, they talk highly of you. They all, it was like Johnny on the spot, you know, whenever we needed something, you were there. And with all the, I saw your, not the note, but your resume when you were leaving. I happened to see that. I was very impressed. I had heard a few things about it before, but I was very impressed. And I know there's a lot of things that you went through as you move on from starting as a patrol officer and then all the way up to as interim chief at one time and deputy chief. And it's just amazing how you, you know, you just ramped the ranks and you did a fantastic job. I know you're leaving, sorry you are leaving, but people do what they have to do. In fact, a man does what he has to do, wish things was different, but you're doing what you have to do, again, as I said. And one thing I know about you, you always did put people in the right department. That was one thing I noticed about you. All the things that, that I mentioned earlier, and the time that I happened to know you, I really respect you, and I know a lot of your police officers respect you, the community respects you. I know that for fact, in fact, when people were having concerns in their neighborhood, what you did was have the community involvement with the police officers. I went, I think, with three or four walk-alongs when you initiated that, and it was very good. I saw some of your officers knock on the door, and they just say they were sergeant, captain, whoever they were, people opened the door, it was all excited, wow, the police come in and talk with us. That's something, a lot of time, we, we hear things, most of the time, you don't hear good things. But when you see things, it makes you feel good, something positive. People, and it's no secret what happened last Monday, Monday before last, I should say, about police officers, where someone had a knee on, on someone's neck. It's no secret what's going on. And again, with your leadership, the last four and a half years that I've been on as a council member, nothing like that ever happened. You know, nothing like that ever happened that I happened to notice. That's things that happened that wasn't on television or videoed and what have you. Now, that's different, we're living in a different era. I mean, something happened, someone taking the picture. As I speak right now, somebody listening and taking a picture. Might hold it against me one day, and maybe not. But we live in a different times, and, and the times that I associated myself with you was very rewarding. I hear good things about you. I don't want to keep saying the same thing over and over again. I know people talk well about you as well. I'll leave a few more comments after my fellow councilmen say something, and also when the mayor president say something. Again, thanks for all that you did, and I'm sure I'm thanking you from constiption of mine and other, other representatives or council members, they would like to share a few things with you as well. Ms., Mr. Lazar?
Certainly, I've had the honor of getting to know you, and certainly Lisa and I go way back over the years. And I know you've had a very long and illustrious career. But I really think that you did your best work over the last four and a half years. The eight months or so that you served as interim chief, and the, was it three and a half years that you served as deputy chief? When, when you took over as interim chief, the Lafayette Police Department was going through what I call a transition, if you will. And you really brought stability to the department. And yourself and former Chief Agarlord, I think, really brought the department to another level. I think you all really brought the department to another level. And the fruits of your labor will be felt for years to come in this community. Thank you for all that you've done. Certainly sorry to see you go, and I really mean that with all sincerity. But I understand that it's time for you to move on to the next chapter. So I certainly wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Deputy Chief, 29 years, right? 29 years, wow, 29 and a half. Wow, you know, I say this all the time to fellow, to officers, you know, I was in the military, I had real bullets one time, well, two times in my career, once overseas and then when I went to the range. 29 years, 29 years, you did a real-world mission. Every day, every day, you were willing to put your life on the line, lead by example for those that you were blessed to serve. And that's commendable. And tonight, we honor you, and there's, I can't say it any better than Councilman Lewis did, or Councilman Lazar, or my fellow councilmen. I just know I'm appreciative. And I know you have some other endeavors that, that you announced, and it's a long, grueling path, no, but you're, you're up for the task, you're up for the task. I wish you Godspeed, I'm a phone call away, and I just appreciate everything you've done for our city. And, and I know you'll continue to serve, and if the people of Lafayette select you as our next marshal, we should all raise our, raise our honor to you and do everything we can to support you. So, thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you. I couldn't say anything different than what they've said. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for sharing your gifts. You have a gift for people. You have a gift to bring people together. You make people feel comfortable. You make people feel safe. I mean, that, that is a gift. And I'm so glad that you're going to share that gift in your next endeavor, and, and, and we're lucky to have you in the community. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Ms. Ebert?
Hey now. Again, thank you for all you've done. You didn't just do your job, but you, you threw yourself into your community by getting involved and getting engaged through Leadership Lafayette, through encouraging the community walks and the trunk or treats and everything you've done. So you didn't just sit back in a chair, and you were out there involving the community, which especially today's times, we need that. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for just going the extra mile in everything you've done. I've enjoyed working with you.
Appreciate it. It's up to you, sir. So you got the floor?
Yeah, very quickly. First of all, I have to start off by saying thank you to my wife and my daughter, who's, who's here. Without those two, that's my family, without those two, I wouldn't be here. So, all the late nights and call-outs and, and it's all the things that they've been through through the 30 years. Also, I would like to say thank you to the council and the administration. I really appreciate it. I love this city. I love what I do. 30 years seem like it went by, I guess, quickly. I came here in 1990, and I came here as an officer very young. And during the years, I must say, I saw everything. I mean, I can't think of any incident or anything that took place where my, my experience that I've gotten from those, from those incidents and everything is, was wonderful. The biggest thing is the officers that I worked with. The officers that I worked with from day one, everything from supervisors to me becoming a supervisor and living my dream by actually hating a police department like the Lafayette Police Department. Many friends, many brothers, I have my best friend Dorian sitting in, I told him go home a long time ago, but he wouldn't do that. So, but just friends that I've gotten through the, through the ranks are like brothers. And I really, I'm really happy at this particular time. I retired, and I'm, I guess I wasn't ready yet. I'm still young, so I'm gonna try to, I'm transitioning, and I'm, I'm gonna try to be the next city marshal. It's something that I will be doing, and I did make that announcement already. But anything for this city and the community, and I told, Mr. Lewis speaks about me and the community. We work together a lot of times. We knock on doors. He comes out there with me and knock on doors. And I think it was something that had to be done, and the Community Relations Committee, I had a reporter, I'm gonna say this right quick, talk to me about the protests and what took place and stuff. And it's because of the relationship that the police department that we have with the community, the community leaders know us from the Community Relation Committee. So, it's, it's very, when you have that type of relationship, you don't see problems like you see in other places, you know? They say, well, it wasn't that many officers around or whatever. Believe me, it was secured. But because we have confidence in our community, and I keep that confidence in, in my community, and I love my community, so I believe that that's the reason why we don't have those problems. So I would like to thank everybody for, for this, for coming out and for actually giving me an award for these 29 and a half years. And my camera person, that's doing a great job. That's a part of my leadership, that we talked about Lafayette leadership. I'm gonna give it a plug. Anybody get a chance to go to Lafayette leadership, need to go to Lafayette leadership. Don't stay, police officers, we always stay in a box. I decided to get out the box and start doing things with the community, and it was one of the best things I've ever did. So, with that said, thank God, of course, for my, for keeping me healthy during this year, these years. And again, my wife and my daughter means the world to me, and they stick by me no matter what. So, special thanks to them. So, thank you guys.
Okay, sir, before you leave, I have an award for, it says, Captain Chief Reginald Thomas, in appreciation for your 29 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Lafayette and the Lafayette Police Department, September 17, 1990 through May 29, 2020. I'll give you this. Okay, Mr. Lazar, I'm sorry, you had a question?
Yes, Mayor President, I'm sorry, I was running a little slow there, and I, you know, it's all right. But in any event, I was, and I'm sure we were all very shocked to hear about the resignation of Mr. Boudreau from Parks and Recreation. Could you tell us what the effective date of his resignation is?
His retirement date is today.
I'm sorry, retirement?
That's all right. Let me tell you something, guys, you know, we honored our Deputy Chief just now, and I hope we come to a point where we can honor another one of our local heroes, which is Senator Gerald Boudreau, who has done, just given it his all to this community for 36 years, right, Sid? 36, 36 years and a half. So we recognize our Deputy Chief, 29 and a half years, and our, one of our own Louisiana, or Lafayette delegation members, long-serving director, director, I believe, for 30 years, if I'm not mistaken, helped grow the public, excuse me, the Parks and Rec Department, and just a quality person, quality person. So I hope that we soon can recognize him with the award, too. Knowing him, he probably wouldn't want us to do that, but I hope that he would be gracious enough to come and accept it, because I can think of a few people that would deserve it more than he would. So, I think we all agree with that.
Is there an effective date, or he's already retired?
It's effective today, is my understanding. HR can confirm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cindy, please read item number six, please.
Harold Arseneau Betty Valmore and Harold Arseneau and Donna Leday OBO Cohen Arseneau versus Jared Anson Brown, Lafayette Consolidated Government at AL, docket number 20154862F, Judicial, 15th Judicial District Court, Parish of Lafayette, State of Louisiana.
I need legal to explain why we need to go into executive session. Oh, there he is.
Evening, council members. Paul Escott, Assistant City Parish Attorney. Mr. Chairman, this matter involves pending litigation in which LCG is a party, and because of the nature of the claims and defenses asserted in this litigation, it is my opinion that discussion of the litigation in open session will have a detrimental effect on the litigation or the bargaining position of LCG in the litigation. For that reason, it is my opinion that an executive session is permissible and appropriate for discussion of the litigation, and I recommend that the council go into executive session for that purpose.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion and a second to enter executive session, first by Ms. Liz Ebert, and second by Mr. Andy Nakim. Council discussion? I see none, Ms. Williams, any public comments? Okay, let's, okay, let's go into executive session.
District one? District two? District three? District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
The motion to enter into, if executive session is approved.
All to return from executive session.
District two?
Yes.
District three? District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
The motion to return from executive session is approved.
Okay, I need a vote to accept the legal recommendation. I need, I need a motion and a second to accept the recommendation of legal department.
Nanette, could you read the motion, and then, then you could take a motion in a second on what you're reading, what you're reading?
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of legal, only authorizing the execution and filing of a consent judgment in the litigation entitled Harold Arseneau Betty Valmore and Harold Arseneau and Donna Leday on behalf of Cohen Arseneau versus Jansen Anson Broussard, excuse me, Jared Anson Brown, Lafayette Consolidated Government at AL, docket number 20154862F, 15th Judicial District Court, Parish of Lafayette, State of Louisiana, with the specific condition that this motion does not authorize the appropriation of any monies to fund either in whole or in part the subject consent judgment.
Okay, you have a motion and a second? Motion by Ms. Nanette, and second by Ms. Andy Nakim. Any council discussion? See none? Ms. Williams, public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, I need a vote to accept the recommendation of the legal department.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
The motion to accept the recommendations of the legal department is approved.
I need a motion and a second from the council to introduce ordinance items number seven through 19 and global. Motion by Ms. Nanette Cook? Second by Ms. Liz Ebert. Cindy, start reading, please.
City ordinance 412020, and ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the issuance and sale of public improvement sales tax refunding bonds, series 2020, taxable public improvement sales tax refunding bonds, series 2020A, and public improvement sales tax bond, series 2020B, of the City of Lafayette, State of Louisiana, approving the preliminary official statement in connection therewith, providing for the sale of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. City ordinance 422020, and ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the issuance of not exceeding $35 million of taxable limited tax bonds, series 2020A, of the City of Lafayette, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form, terms, and conditions of said bonds, designating the date, denomination, and place of payment of said bonds, providing for the payment thereof in principal and interest, authorizing the agreement with the paying agent, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. City ordinance 432020, and ordinance of the City Council, of the Lafayette City Council, providing for the issuance and sale of taxable public improvement sales tax refunding bonds, series 2020C, and public improvement sales tax sales tax refunding bonds, series twenty twenty C, and public improvement sales tax bond series twenty twenty D of the City of Lafayette, State of Louisiana, approving the preliminary official statement in connection therewith, providing for the sale of said bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. City ordinance forty-four twenty twenty, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the issuance of not exceeding twenty-seven million, twenty-seven million five hundred thousand dollars of taxable limited tax refunding bonds, series twenty twenty, of the City of Lafayette, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form, fixing the details, and providing for the rights of, of the owners thereof, providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds in the application, and the application of, of the proceeds thereof to the refunding of certain bonds of the city, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. City ordinance forty-five twenty twenty, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the abandonment of the right-of-way for K Street and the granting of a temporary utility servitude on the property of Andre Orin Leje, located in the one hundred block of K Street. City ordinance forty-six twenty twenty, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code to ask to reclassify the property of Integrity Development Group LLC, case number zero N twenty twenty zero 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 seven, sixteen oh six West Willow Street rezoning, located generally west of Reading Avenue, north of West Willow Street, and south of Interstate ten, being rezoned from industrial light to commercial mix. City ordinance forty-seven twenty twenty, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code and the official map of the City of Lafayette providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the City of Lafayette, Louisiana, case number zero N twenty twenty zero 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 eight, Woodlands Cove subdivision annexation, located generally south of Ambassador Cafrey Parkway, west of Sherman Metairie Road, and east of Vero School Road, and assigning a zoning classification of residential single-family District Four. City ordinance forty-eight twenty twenty, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council approving a conditional use permit to allow a self-service storage facility in a commercial mixed zoning district, case number zero N twenty twenty zero 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 nine, fifteen oh one La Nuitville Road, conditional use permit, located generally north of Ambassador Cafrey Parkway, east of Vero School Road, and west of Sherman Metairie Road. City ordinance forty-nine twenty twenty, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code to ask to reclassify the property of Christine Tyler, case number zero N twenty twenty zero zero one zero, one twenty-five Jamela Drive rezoning, located generally east of Pinhook Road, north of La Russa France, and west of Test Drive. The particular parcel being rezoned from commercial heavy to mixed-use neighborhood. City ordinance fifty twenty twenty, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code to ask to reclassify the property of Lafayette Habitat for Humanity Incorporated, case number zero N twenty twenty zero zero one one, one hundred block Frank Street rezoning, located generally west of Pinhook Road, east of South General Marshall Street, and south of Clifford Street. The particular parcel being rezoned from commercial heavy residential single-family to mixed-use neighborhood. City ordinance fifty-one twenty twenty, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code to ask to reclassify the property of Salum LLC and Pine Farm Limited, case number zero N twenty twenty zero zero one two, fifteen hundred block Camellia Boulevard rezoning, located generally south of Camellia Boulevard, east of Calais Salum Road, and west of Bluebird Drive. The particular parcel being rezoned from agricultural residential single-family to commercial mix. City ordinance fifty-two twenty twenty, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending, amending the fiscal year nineteen twenty capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring ninety-four thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars and eleven cents from the UPGR Police Building Elevators Line Item to Building Renovations Repairs Line Item, use of various LCG building maintenance projects managed by the Public Works Department Facilities Maintenance Division. City ordinance fifty-three twenty twenty, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the building or structure located at three two one Macklin Street, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Rudolph P. Barra and Doris Lalanne Barra, care of Gerald J. Block attorney appointed to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare and ordering the condemnation of same.
Any counsel discussion? I see none. So, Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Call, I need a vote to introduce in global item seven through nineteen.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
The motion to introduce in global is approved.
City council meeting has been adjourned. Good night.